All right. It looks like we might be officially live streaming. Is that accurate?
Uh, give it a second. It's still loading. All right, the live stream is going and I'm starting the recording. Uh, right, right now.
Here we go. Thank you so much. Uh, good afternoon and welcome everybody. This is the Planning Commission for April 8, 2025. I'm going to do a roll call of commissioners, just so that I know that we are here. Commissioner Blackwell?
Present.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton Falk, present. Commissioner Dick?
Present.
Thank you, Commissioner Gammie. Commissioner Maza?
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill.
Here.
Thank you, Commissioner Cantinio?
Here.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruiz?
Here.
Thank you, Commissioner Wu.
Air.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. We will move on. Uh, to our briefing and briefing is where the Planning Commission hears cases as preliminary public presentation. Initial questions will come from the Commission. There will be no public testimony. We have two items up for briefing today and I will read them. They are as follows. Briefing Agenda Item A is a DOMI residential parking permit update. This is a reduction of an area EE in the residential parking permit program. Agenda Item B is BDA dash 2024 dash zero six zero six seven at Fort Smithfield Street. This is a residential conversion. Moving up to Agenda Item A. DOMI residential parking permit update, reduction of area EE in the residential parking permit program. This is located in the Point Breeze neighborhood and presenting is Ms. Tandon.
Thank you, Commissioners. I hope you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
All right. Um, so this is the briefing report for the first item on the agenda. It is the reduction of the residential parking permit area EE in Point Breeze. In January 2024, the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure received a request from residents to remove South Linden Avenue in the Point Breeze area from the residential parking permit area EE. As per the code, DOMI conducted a parking study to determine whether the reduction would have any significant impacts on residents and commuter vehicles. Their study revealed that the reduction would not have any significant impacts. DOMI presented these recommendations in a Development Activities Meeting to Point Breeze Organization on March 12, 2025. The findings of the report were attached to the briefing report. The Planning Commission will determine the appropriateness of the parking study and the parking management plan by taking into account factors included in Section 549 dot zero three P. We will now have a presentation from our staff from DOMI who are present in person.
Thank you. All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Ryland Seifert and the curbside program manager, what was that? Okay, and I'm the curbside program manager for the Cities Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. And as we get started here, since it's been quite a while since. Try to move the slides, hold on. Okay. Oh, okay. Too far. All right. Uh, since it's been quite a while since any RPP changes have come in front of the Commission, I thought I'd give a little update on DOMI's role in the program, since this is actually our first time presenting changes to an RPP area since we took over management of the program in 2022. Prior to that, anything involving creating a new zone, evaluating existing zone for a reduction and minor expansion and amendment would be up to the Department of City Planning. And so that's now DOMI's role. So we do all of the parking studies and all of the recommendations for any amendments to an existing zone or creation of a new zone. And then anything involving issuing of permits and enforcement is up to the Pittsburgh Parking Authority. And as an overview of what the process looks like, it can start in a few different ways. Um, this is for any sort of amendment reduction or pretty similar for the creation of a new zone as well. It can start with um identification in any part of the plan or petitions. That's how this case that we're going to talk about today started was by petitions of residents on the subject street or at DOMI's discretion, which we rarely ever use. That's only when we are receiving word from residents that they do want this and just having necessarily completed all the petitioning. We then go out and conduct a parking study or parking studies, which involve us going out into the field and counting the number of cars that are there, looking at whose residents, whose visitors, how long cars are parked, all that sort of thing. And we use that and other data sources like permit holders from Parking Authority or or other things to come up with our recommendations. And that's the parking management plan. And that's where we will, you know, say, here's going to be the changes to the zone, or in this case, you know, we believe that this is eligible for a reduction and there's not going to be any major future impacts from that removal of this block. And then we will present that back to the community. So for this case, we did add all the information to our Engage PGH page. And then we also had a Development Activities Meeting. As far as review and approval of these changes, the first step is being here with you all um for both briefing and then hopefully in two weeks hearing in action. And then City Council has the ultimate final say in these changes. So this case that we're talking about here today is area EE in the Point Breeze neighborhood. It spans both Point Breeze South and Point Breeze North. In January 2024, we received a request from the residents on this block to remove South Linden Street between Juniata Place and Reynolds Street from RPP area EE. We received seventeen petitions out of twenty-four households on that street. All those petitions were in favor of the proposal. We did not receive any petitions against the proposal. This is a map of all of area EE and you'll see that the subject block is that last little bit sticking out on the bottom left there. So area EE is one of our newer RPP areas and it was created in 2013 to address concerns of people parking to go to Chatham University or Bakeries Square um and other commuter vehicles. And it was expanded in 2014 and 2016 and Linden Place between Penn and Reynolds was added in the 2014 expansion. So we conducted a parking study last spring to count the number of vehicles and to determine the parking demand. We found that on this block between both block faces, both sides of the street, there were forty legal parking spaces available. So that's taking into account things like curb cuts and any fire hydrants on the block. Um, of that, there were only twelve vehicles parked on the street. That's about thirty percent occupied. And all of the vehicles that we counted were there for more than two hours. There were seven of those vehicles were residents. Five of those were not residents. We determined that by looking at who has permits for the existing area EE. Um, so that means that uh twelve and a half percent of the spaces were occupied by commuter vehicles. So we look to evaluate this against um the criteria for reduction of an RPP area. Um, the first thing is to determine if it's going to be impacted by commuter vehicles if we get rid of the RPP designation. Uh, there is very little occupancy of this block when we did our parking studies, again thirty percent occupied, meaning that seventy percent of the curb space was still available. That could be used by residents or commuter vehicles and that leaves plenty of space for residents to park. Uh, we also observed that there was a high number of curb cuts and people with access to off-street parking on this block. And um, you know, it was fifty-nine percent vehicles were parked by residents, forty-one percent were parked by non-residents again. And so when we look to the criteria to create a new RPP zone, the minimum utilization is seventy percent, so much higher than what we were seeing, with at least fifteen percent non-resident parking. And so in short, if we were to propose this as part of an expansion or a new area today, it would not qualify. So therefore, we concluded that removing this from the RPP area would not lead to any significant impacts by commuter vehicles. And also, we need to make sure that the remaining size of area EE will demand at least fifty permits annually. This is to um keep up with Parking Authority's enforcement and operations. There were two hundred and fifty-six permits issued for all of area EE in 2023 and the subject block only took up thirty of those permits. So plenty more parts in the area. So we agreed with the residents' requests and recommended that this block do is removed from RPP area EE. And this is a final note, um, you know, I'll try to have this in the introduction as well, but we did present to the Point Breeze Organization on March 12. Um, and again, we had our information posted on the Engage PGH page and as of this morning, we did not receive any responses to that page. And that is all I have. So I'm happy to answer questions. Another question.
Thank you so much for a very thorough presentation. Uh, at this time, there is no public testimony, but Commissioners, there's time for comment or questions. Any Commissioner questions? Uh, Commissioner O'Neill?
Oh, I was just going to say, uh, thanks for the reminder and the thorough presentation. It's, like you said, it's been a while since we had to review this. So thank you.
I have a, I have a comment, please, Mr. Maza. How often or how effective is the enforcement and how often do you get complaints from people who live on the streets that enforcement isn't adequate enough?
Enforcement is handled by Pittsburgh Parking Authority, so I can't speak too much about the complaints that they get. They do their best to prioritize enforcement across all the forty-some-odd RPP zones in the city.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if that concludes the questions, which it looks like it does, thank you so much again for a very thorough presentation. And we'll see you back in two.
Thank you.
Have a good rest of your day. Okay, uh, moving on to briefing Agenda Item B. And it is as follows, BDA dash 2024 dash zero six zero six seven at Fort Smithfield Street. This is a residential conversion in the Central Business District neighborhood. Presenting to us this afternoon is Mr. Fraker.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. It looks like we have our applicant team promoted, so I will um provide a brief overview and then I'll turn it over to you. Project Development Plan Application BDA 2024 zero six zero six seven was filed by Rothschild Doino Collaborative on behalf of JDND Enterprises for interior and exterior renovations for a change of use of an existing twelve-story building into residential and office use. This per Section nine ten dot zero one dot C dot one dot C, structures involving exterior alterations in excess of $250,000 are subject to project development review and approval by the Planning Commission. The project is within the National Historic District, First Side Historic District, but is not a locally designated building or in a locally designated district. Stair review by the Historic Review Commission was not required. Existing uses within the building include retail use on the first floor, a daycare use on the second and third floors, and office uses on the upper floors. The project includes a new stairwell at the rear of the building and other facade renovations. The project will include forty-six new residential units on floors four through twelve and office use on floors two and three. The ground level will have residential amenity space, including a bike room with access from the entry as well as from Fort Pitt Boulevard. The project was granted an exemption from the onsite loading requirements. An existing on, on-street loading spot is located less than a hundred feet from the building. The applicant will be pursuing alternative compliance for street trees along Smithfield Street and Fort Pitt Boulevard. A sidewalk vaults and underground utilities preclude planting in those, on those frontages. A Development Activities Meeting was held with the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership on March 13th. A copy of the DAM report is attached to your briefing report. And with that, I'll turn it over to the applicants. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Jeff Campbell. Oh, thank you. I'm a principal with Rothschild Doino Collaborative. Uh, we are the architects for the project. Uh, we're also joined online by Jared Miller on behalf of the owner, developer, contractor, and management company, which is Woda Cooper. Joined by Tara Ernest from our offices, who's the project architect, and by Michael McCormick from Gateway Engineers, who is performing the civil engineering on the project. Uh, one thing before we go to the next slide, I did want to just reiterate. Uh, everything we are proposing is by right. The reason we're here is because we're proposing exterior renovations greater than $250,000. So we'll focus the presentation there. Uh, just a very brief introduction to Woda Cooper, because while they are a well-established uh company that's been around for, for a while, uh, this, and they've done work in Pennsylvania. This is their first project in the city itself. Uh, so Woda Cooper, you know, again, has been founded since nineteen ninety. Uh, does a lot of focus on both new and adaptive reuse throughout the country or throughout the mid-Atlantic and Midwest regions. Uh, they have three hundred and thirty communities, sixteen thousand units are currently managing. Uh, and then they have, they're currently in seventeen different states. You can see up on the screen here. Uh, the one other thing to note is that they are a multifaceted company, so they represent development. They represent the construction. They will likely be the general contractor for this project. Uh, and then they also have a management. So this project, you know, they are doing this for themselves, if you will, and they will be the ones that are managing this in the future. They also have an architecture wing, but for this particular project, uh, they wanted to go with somebody local based on the complexity in the existing building. So the project itself is Fort Smithfield Street and what we're calling the Smithfield Lofts. So you can see here at the end of the Smithfield Street, the Smithfield Bridge, uh, the building outlined in white. So we are fronted along Smithfield Street. Uh, we're also fronted by Fort Pitt to the riverside. And then we have actually zero lot lines on the other two remaining elevations. As Mr. Fraker noted, we are in the First Side Historic District within that boundary. And that's not a city-recognized district, but it is a national district. Uh, and the building itself is just beautiful building, uh, great shape. These, these two elevations are pretty iconic, I think, as you're certainly as you're crossing the Smithfield Bridge. Uh, it's a twelve-story building. It was actually built in two pieces. So the lower half, the first six stories were built in nineteen oh two and then three years later, they expanded in nineteen oh five to add on the upper six stories. Uh, currently, the lower three floors were a daycare that's since been vacated. The upper nine stories are office spaces, but they've all been in various states of vacancy as well. So right now, there's just a few occupancies. What we're proposing is that we're actually going to relocate the offices to the second and third floor. So we'll have offices on those two floors and then everything above will be forty-six apartment units. And then the ground floor will be amenities to serve those apartment units. The uh, funding is both through, we have some Lytech funding through this, but then we also have historic tax credits. And I just, I wanted to note that because from an elevation standpoint, everything that we're doing has to go through the historic tax credit uh process, which is, if you're familiar with it, pretty rigorous. And has a high level of quality standards. Uh, and then again, the zoning at the bottom of the page, uh, just identifying again, project development plan. We're here for the exterior alterations in excess of $250,000. Uh, and then we did have a development application meeting with the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership on March thirteenth. And then, uh, while not technically part of this application, we do have an adjacent site uh that will be a separate application where we are providing parking. There's no parking requirement being downtown. Uh, but we do have seven spaces. There's currently a surface lot that has eleven spaces that are striped very um. Uh, I'd say organically. Uh, so we're going to be bringing these up to more current codes. Introduce four accessible spaces as well as some landscaping. So you can see that here. The elevations themselves have, really, there's three types of exterior work that we're doing. The first is facade repairs. The second is door and window openings at the street level. You'll see that highlighted with the red bubble on the ground floor here. And then we do have a new egress stair in the light well in the rear. So just, and I'll go through these very quickly, but happy to, happy to come back. Uh, so the facade repairs are things I think you would typically anticipate for a hundred and twenty-year-old building, just some cracking at lintels, parapets, things like that. So that's, you know, a big piece of what we're doing. On the street level, the introductions we are doing are mainly to uh bring the building up to have some of the amenities that we have on the ground floor. So right now, there's various uh doors along the storefront windows along Smithfield Street. We'll be replacing those to make them all consistent, to make them more historical. Uh, we also have, currently there's blue awnings with signage for the daycare that surround both elevations. We'll be replacing those. We haven't picked the color yet, but the awnings themselves will be comparable to what's there. Uh, we have, you know, currently the building has two elevators. Everything is fully accessible on the interior, but the front door actually has a three-inch kind of awkward slope that isn't fully accessible. Uh, as part of this project, we're actually going to be lifting the sidewalk to make everything completely flush at that entry level, so that we'll, we'll have a fully accessible entrance. Uh, along the Fort Pitt elevation, that image in the lower right is uh, is a, is a photo. Right now, the dumpster is stored on the street. Uh, so as part of this project, we'll actually be storing the dumpster inside. So we're introducing a garage door to open that up. And then we are introducing a new entry door because we have a bike room that could be accessed from that area as well. So bikes could go directly through that entrance and then, and we are maintaining an egress stair to the right. Uh, and then the last, probably most significant piece is this is a twelve-story building with a single stair. In order to bring this to a residential occupancy, we need to provide some additional safety upgrades. Uh, we're introducing a second stair for this, but with two historical facades and two fire line, fire uh zero property line, uh, we can't do that. We can't provide the stair outside the building footprint at all. So we're providing that within the existing uh light well. So you can see that shown in green here. The other thing we're doing with this is the uh, sort of looks like a used air conditioning sales uh, you know, store on the left. We just have a collection of different air handling units. We'll be cleaning that up as well, providing two lofts as we go. Um, and then a new mechanical. And then just wrapping up two quick views that we did to kind of see what that stair would look like. The first one, uh, relay number one here is as far back as we could get on Fort Pitt Boulevard, which is the most visible. You can see the stair from Fort Pitt and of course, it's not visible at all from Smithfield. And then there is a second view from Cherry Way, which does, as of today, you can't see that stair directly. Um, of course, if anything were built on that adjacent parcel, uh, it would be invisible. And then, uh, so this is pretty much the second to last slide. So here, that view from Fort Pitt is on the left. You can just barely see a little white line that starts to, to emerge. Um, that would be the stair. Uh, there are the two mechanical lofts you can start to see. We'll have some decorative metal screening around those. You don't see the units. And then on the right, we have the view from Cherry Way where it is a more direct view. Uh, we're proposing a fiber cement-like material around the stair. It's made to, the color we're trying to match as closely as possible to the brick that's on the interior, so that it hopefully recedes as much as possible. And that's our proposal. Happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you so much. Again, another uh very thorough presentation. At this time, we don't take public testimony, but we do take comments and questions from Commissioners. Commissioner Dick, it looks like you have a comment or question?
Yes, sir. Could you uh discuss the affordability of the housing in these units, please?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So these, this is funded through the uh Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency, their low-income housing tax credits. So Jared could probably talk about the specifics of what levels of affordability those are based on AMI, but they are all at this point proposed to be affordable units.
Then my property can discuss that a little bit later. Um, second, my second question is, I just wanted to check that the, the staircase is actually, the enclosed staircase is actually outside the building, but accessible, accessible through, from the interior. Is that correct?
Correct. So we have a hallway on the inside of every unit. It'll end um at that stair uh so that there'd be a flush level entrance to every stair on every level. And then that connects into an existing stair that's on the second and third floors.
Thank you.
Any additional, uh, Commissioner Maza?
Yes. Uh, besides the funding that you did mention, is there downtown conversion funding from the state, R cap funding? And is there any funding from the Urban Redevelopment Authority?
Jared, you want to take?
Yeah, Jeff, I can answer that question. Um, yes to all of them. So we, a part of this proposal is um office conversion, which will have R cap funding. And then for the residential piece, it'll be uh PCP funding through the ERA as well as a rental gap program funding through the ERA.
So, so the level of that funding will be commercial, um prevailing wage? Anything over five stories? Is that correct?
Yes, that'd be correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wu, looks like Commissioner Maza has concluded.
Yeah, uh, first of all, um, great to see, um, you know, something happening on Smithfield Street, especially, you know, conversion to residential. I, uh, yeah, I, I think, you know, having that bus stop there, but really busy, uh, you know, conversion of bus routes is, is going to be a, you know, great for this project. I, I did have a question about the first floor. Uh, he said most of it's going to be a residential, um, like, uh, you know, space for, for services, um. How, how open is that going to look from the street? Um, you know, i- is it going to look like a storefront or is it, um, you know, are the windows going to be um blocked off? Like, uh, how, how's that treatment of that first floor going to look?
Sure. From uh, currently, the Smithfield Street elevation is all open, so the glass is all uh full height. We're going to be maintaining or replacing all of that. So everything that's along Smithfield Street, and that includes offices, that includes the community room, would maintain that full visibility. Everything along Fort Pitt Boulevard currently has a half level where the, the lower, I'd say, three feet or so are closed and the upper is glass. We're going to be maintaining that. Um, behind those spaces are another shot of the community room. Uh, we have an indoor play area that would also be in that particular area. Uh, and then the bike room, or actually a trash room, the bike rooms behind it. Uh, hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, so, so it won't be, um, it won't be a huge difference from uh, like the, I guess openness, uh, of what it currently looks like now.
Yeah, I think correct. Uh, the, the, probably the, the most significant difference is right now there's window film on the daycare along Fort Pitt. So that window film would come down. So there would be a little more visibility in that regard.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Um, does that conclude questions or comments from Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Dick? You're on mute.
No, Jeff, you, you had said that the other gentleman would, um, give me more details of the affordability levels and I didn't hear anything along that.
For sure.
Yeah, Jeff, I can answer that as well. Um, the, it, it will be a mixed income development, so there will be um normal of AMI rates for the lifetime portion at twenty to sixty percent uh through PHFA, and then there'll also be seven market rate units.
Thank you.
All right. Yep.
Thank you.
Sorry. This is Commissioner King Tanier. Uh, I just have two questions. So first of all, thank you so much for saving this building, um, because it is a very beautiful building and it's such a prominent uh location. Um, I think the facade are, you know, it's a beautiful facade. I think my question is going to be more about the back facades, the ones that everybody in downtown sees, you know? Are you guys going to be repainting it or colored that it's matches more of the brick versus what's there?
We're cleaning this up. I'm wondering, Tara, could you maybe speak exactly what's in the scope on the, that elevation?
You mean relative to the interior lot lines? Those are the ones that are questioned. Um, yes, any items that are, any facades that are currently painted would be painted. Um, again, and then there is some, um, like, just repair work as would be typical for a, um, you know, a hundred-plus-year-old building.
Right. Okay, good, great. Yeah, because the color seems like they chose a color that has, you know, faded away quite quickly. Um, the other thing I, I did wanted to ask you a little bit more is about the, 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 um, Fort Pitt Boulevard elevation. So you're not taking those windows back to the historic, because obviously the historic didn't have the bottom portion, you know, graded out, which is actually, I, I was just looking at an area, at a picture here. It's actually almost like at eye level for a pedestrian walking by. So you, you're not going to have that, that penetration that you would if you had the historic windows there.
Correct. Um, the historic tax credits, if we were replacing those windows, we would have to make that full height. Um, based on cost, based also on the traffic along Fort Pitt, the fact that we do have an indoor play area with kids on the inside. Uh, we elected to keep that, that, that current level.
Okay. Um, and I guess would you have the material that matches better the stone or are you going to just? You know, because right now it just looks like it's very gray versus the stone that is on, at the base of the columns there.
I, I believe and correct me, Tara, if I'm wrong, but I believe the current scope is to basically clean that up as well, but not replace new material in that area.
I see.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, I think it would be helpful next time you're here to have a little bit more detailed elevation drawings or, you know, provide some indication of what those changes are going to be, but because they're in black and white. Um, you know, it's hard for us to picture how that would interact.
Okay.
And then, um, again, thank you though for the thorough presentation. It's very helpful. Um, I was a little bit confused at first when I looked at the parking. Um, just because I wasn't exactly understanding where it was going to be. Um, but with the proposed parking, you're getting rid of a curb cut?
We are, I don't know, Michael can't tell I'm looking at him, but uh, currently there is, uh, there is, we are, there is a curb cut along Smithfield and there is a really long curb cut along First. We're keeping the curb cut along First, but we're eliminating the curb cut along Smithfield.
Yeah, so I think kind of same thing. It was just a little bit hard to tell what is there now versus what is proposed, if that could be flushed out next time you're back here.
Be happy to share that.
Great.
Well, and you did mention that you're going to put a garage door along Smithfield, right?
Correct.
Okay, um, maybe like details of that, because I think I would, that would probably be kind of important, especially because it's on Smithfield, right? And again, the view from, I'm thinking about the view from across the river. The, the building looks fantastic. So what that garage door is going to look like, if it's not going to be just like metal or in garage door, yeah. That'll be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, that looks like that concludes Commissioner questions. Again, thank you so much for being thorough and we'll see you back in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great rest of your day. And so that um leaves us at the end of the briefing portion for April 8, 2025. We will resume at 2:00 PM for uh, We will resume at 2:00 PM for, uh, the agenda of hearing in action. So Commissioners, uh, we'll take a break. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's the closest coffee shop.
Okay, we're about five minutes to start. That'll really just given us a time check.
LaShawn, this is Eileen, the court reporter.
Hi there.
Hi, I just wanted to apologize for, you probably don't realize that all I see is like, I, you folks, I don't see anything else in the room around. And so when I said at the end of the last hearing, and who was the gentleman who was just speaking? And that was Tiffany. So I just wanted to have somebody please apologize to Tiffany. And understand that I can't see anything in the room except for you guys, you know, in your panel. That's it. So.
And the panel is limited because it's tiny. And I do definitely appreciate that. And if Tiffany is in the room, just acknowledge the apology, please, and thank you. Commissioner Maza, oh, they may not be able to hear us. Maybe it's muted for them. Oh, that was so kind of you. And, and we do recognize.
Thank you for the apology.
Yes, I'm sorry. I felt so terrible.
Well, you know, when you're, when you're still doing hybrid, it's, it's, you know, that can always present some challenges, but that was very nice. Thank you.
And like I said, the view from here is very limited that I can't, I can't see anything beyond usually unless it switches of a speaker is over to podium or something. I just see you folks on the panel.
Well, thank you so much. We're about three minutes to start. And so I know that you're here. I appreciate that. Yes, indeed.
I'll be right back.
Absolutely. We're about two minutes out.
So thanks for all that info.
Oh, yeah.
I end up with a.
That's a good match.
All right.
Hopefully.
Yeah, it's awesome. It's good.
Yeah, yeah. It's very diligent.
Yeah.
Two Ls and Philip, Woo.
Yes, yes, two Ls.
All right, good.
Yeah, we, we need to correct that on the, the city's webpage. I think the chair's name is also spelled wrong on there. And so all the news media have been picking up on, on the wrong spellings for both of our names.
There's benefits to that, though. Anonymity.
Yeah.
The unfortunate part is it, it's close enough for, for challenge, right? So.
How's that go? Horseshoes and hand grenades or something like that?
Right? There we go. I love it. So we are a minute.
When you have a first name like mine, Eileen, anything in the ballpark, I answer to.
Is it A or E?
Hmm?
Is it A or does it start with A or E?
E, E I.
My, my aunt's, Eileen is stumbled an A.
Yeah. And, and I think also there's like the Polish Eileen also, and I think they spell it I L E N E.
I think I've seen that one.
That's your world of orientation for today.
Good job, guys. We'll go two o'clock, so it's right on the button. I just want to make sure that we are back live. Commissioners, it looks like you've turned on your cameras. Court reporter, thank you so much. You are here. So good afternoon, good people of Pittsburgh. Welcome to the hearing in action portion of today. The hearing in action means that public testimony will be heard. I'm going to do some roll call so that we know who is here as it relates to commissioners. Commissioner Blackwell.
Present.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Burton Falk, present. Commissioner Dick.
Present.
Thank you, Commissioner Gammy. Commissioner Maza.
Here.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill.
Here.
Thank you, Commissioner Quintanilla.
Here.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruiz.
Here.
Thank you, and Commissioner Wu.
Here.
All right, fantastic. Well, as I said, this is the planning commission meeting for April 8, 2025. I'm going to go ahead and read through our agenda for today, and it is as follows. Agenda item A, approval of commission minutes. Agenda item B is correspondence. Agenda item C is plan of lots. Agenda item D is a hearing in action, and agenda item E is the director's report. Moving back to the agenda item A, approval of minutes, we have none for approval for today. Agenda item B, which is correspondence, correspondence for planning commission for April 8, 2025, is as follows. Regarding DCP H dash H N dash 2024 dash zero zero six four one, this is Donnie's place historic nomination at 1226 Heron Avenue. We are in receipt of correspondence from Gwen Cready, board member Allies for Health and Wellbeing. Moving on to agenda item C, which is plan of lots, we have one item before us under plan of lots. That is as follows. Item number one, Lytle Street dash DCP dash lot dash 2025 dash zero 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 seven zero. This is a major subdivision, and it is in the Hazelwood neighborhood. Presenting that here for us this afternoon is Mr. Shetkey.
Thank you. This is the application for the Lytle Street subdivision, DCP lot 2025 zero 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 seven zero. This is the proposed subdivision of one parcel into three parcels. The proposed parcel J three revised would have front of John Hazelwood Avenue, Blair Street, and Lytle Street, and would be twenty six thousand, two hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and thirteen square feet in area. The proposed lot J three A would be twenty five thousand, three hundred and ninety square feet in area. The subject property is currently vacant, and the recommended motion is to preliminarily approve the Lytle Street subdivision and schedule final review on April 22, 2025. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. So today we are looking for preliminary approval. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing and hearing none. Preliminary approval for today and final on 4/22. Motion from the floor, Commissioner Dick.
No move.
Do I have a second? All right, Commissioner Blackwell, I'm going to do roll call. Thank you so much. Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton Falk, aye. Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Maza.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill.
Abstain.
All right, Commissioner Quintanilla, thank you.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruiz.
Aye.
Thank you, and Commissioner Wu.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're moving on to agenda item D, which is hearing in action. We have one item before us under hearing in action, and it is as follows. DCP dash ZDR dash 2025 dash zero zero nine seven seven at 1243 Penn Avenue, 1241 Penn Avenue, and 1237 Penn Avenue, and lastly, 1233 Penn Avenue. This is a demolition of existing buildings to expand the Heinz History Center, and this is located in the Strip District neighborhood. Presenting that here today is Ms. Miriam.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Desmo Architecture File Project Development Plan Application, DCP ZDR 2025 zero zero nine seven seven to demolish existing building to expand the Heinz Historical Center on behalf of the property owners in the GTB zoning district in the Strip District neighborhood. The propose, the proposal is to demolish four existing building along Penn Avenue for fourteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety eight square feet. Per Section 910 oh zero oh one zero C zero one C, demolishing existing building regarding GT district developments, it's considered as a project development plan. Per Section 922 point ten point E, the planning commission shall review the PDP application and act to approve it, approve it with condition or deny it. The development activity meeting is not required as there is no registered, registered community organization in the subject area. Although the design team met with Strip District Neighborhood Executive Board in January 9, 2025. Under Section 92020 point ten point E point two, the planning commission shall review a PDP application according to the criteria. Applicants respond its attached to the report. Based on the information in the application and analyze of the fact of record, the city planning staff recommends approval of demolishing the existing building to expand the Heinz Historical Center under application DCP ZDR 2025 zero zero nine seven seven in the GTP zoning district in the Strip District neighborhood with one condition as follow. If the development application B BDA 2025 zero zero four three six does not proceed, DCP ZDR 2025 zero zero nine seven seven will return to the planning commissioner for final and plan review and approval. I turn it to the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Chip Desmond. I'm with Desmond Architects, and I'm presenting here with Andy Masic from the Heinz History Center, along with Becky Lowe from my office, an architect from my office, and Pete Mastro, as well with MCM Construction Management Consultants. Thank you. Just to get started, you've, you've heard the parcels, you know, it is in the Golden Triangle District. We are working with Gateway Engineers to define this demolition project. And as was stated, we did meet with the Strip District Neighbors Board on January 9th, and the Strip District Neighbors supports the Heinz History Center's efforts to expand on this block adjacent to its existing facilities. Oops, wait a second. Did I go too far? There we go. All right. So this gives you an overview of the surrounding areas between 12th and 13th Street that is occupied by, I believe, in. between 12th and 13th Street that is occupied by, I believe entirely properties owned entirely by the Heinz History Center at this point. We are talking specifically about the parcel that is in the southeast corner of the site at 13th and Penn. And these are the four structures that would be asking for approval for demolish demolition. The the buildings range in age from the eighteen nineties, which is the address 1241 up until the nineteen fifties, which is 1243 Penn Avenue. This is the site as it exists, and this is the first building to the left on the far left of the of the property there that would be torn down, 1233 Penn Avenue. This is the second building, which was an assemblage with the building next to it that was at one time Sushi Kim. And this is the other piece of that building as well. This building's in extremely poor condition as well as some of the others. And then lastly, what we call the Apple Box Building on the corner that would also be demolished. The site would then be cleared and infill to grade, removing any obstacles and obstructions below grade in preparation for some future project. The area bound by this site, this assemblage would be fenced in in preparation for construction with a six inch, six foot high chain link fence around the property line and into the alley. And the eight foot, there'll be an eight foot high steel and wood fence put up against the existing buildings that remain being the History Center and the Dietrich Building at the bottom left hand corner of the site. So that they are protected from demolition activities. And that's, that's really the presentation. All this is in, as I said, in preparation for a future project that we've been working on with the History Center that we'd hope to take to C D A P sometime in June or July, we think, right now.
Okay. Thank you very much for a very thorough presentation. At this time, we do open the floor for public testimony. I'm going to rely on eyes in the room for hands raised. None there.
Sorry. Yeah, we don't have any hands raised in person or online.
Can you hear Tiffany? Okay, great. It's hard to hear you from up here.
I think I might get a little luxury online because it is clear over here. Commissioners, at this time, are there questions, comments, or a motion from the floor?
Yeah. Commissioner Maza here. Personally, say, this next expansion to me is very exciting because I had the opportunity on the last expansion to actually work on a project with Gendoco. And I was there from start to finish. It was a nice build. It was really went really well. I mean, I know there were some hiccups in the beginning. We found a couple train cars in the outside, right, Andy? So but and my wife never believed us, but at the end, they actually put my tools, my boots, my tool bag in as an exhibit. And my wife never believed me until we got there, and I showed her. She's like, gotta be kidding me. Who'd you pay off? Yeah, I'm history. Who'd I pay off? Right. But I'm excited to see this thing happening again. It's a great venue, and it'll be great for Pittsburgh.
Thank you.
Commissioner Maza, thank you so much for that. I love when we can have a direct connection. Commissioner Dick, I saw your hand up.
Just a question. Is any of these four buildings in active use right now?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Wu.
Can you discuss the condition of 1233 Penn Avenue? The building on the very west.
That was in pretty bad shape. That's the one closest to the Dietrich Building. And so I believe that that's, you know, takes on water and the parapet has been coming, coming apart. Let me see if I can get to, if you can go to. You're talking about one more? This building right here? Okay. 1233?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So yes, the building's in pretty bad shape, as they all are, other than the maybe the one on the farthest corner, but yeah, this, I believe this building was built in nineteen thirty is what you showed me recently, Andy. And so it's, like I said, it's it's in pretty bad shape.
Okay.
Can I just, let me just add, this is, I'm Andy Masic. I'm the president of the Heinz History Center. And that building has, it is taking on water. The upper floors haven't been used for probably thirty or more years. Only the the ground floor was able to be used, but now the roof is compromised, and I don't think we can use it for anything.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments, or do we have a motion from the floor?
I just had a quick question. Oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
When you referenced the Dietrich Building, is that also owned by the History Center?
Yes.
Okay. No more questions for me.
Fantastic. And I do apologize. I do have to agree with our court reporter. You're so small, the one, one, you know, sort of Hollywood square that gives all of you together. So if you had your hand up, Vice Chair O'Neill, I do apologize because I didn't see it.
Nope.
All right. So do we, at this time, have a motion from the floor? All right. Commissioner Blackwell moved, and Commissioner, I'm sorry, who gave second?
Doesn't doesn't matter, whoever.
Commissioner Maza? Okay, great. Thank you so much. Or Maza was motion, Blackwell was second, and we're going to do roll call. Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton Falk. Aye. Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Maza.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Quintanilla.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruiz.
Aye.
Thank you, and Commissioner Wu.
Bye.
Thank you. Okay, so the motion passes, and thank you so much, and have a great rest of your day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, while we're giving a moment to clear out, I'll move to the final agenda item on today's agenda, which is agenda item E, and it is the director's report. I understand that we have a director's report today. I'm assuming somebody's walking in.
Yes, somebody's walking to the podium.
Sure. Hi, everybody. Good afternoon. My name is Sharonda Watley. I am Assistant Director of Strategic Planning. So I lead the group of neighborhood planners in the department, and so we have twelve staff. They are neighborhood planners, urban designers, and engagement specialists. And so one of the things that we are working on, are working to wrap up, is the Greater Hill District Master Plan. And so, as you all know, the city is embarking on the comprehensive plan process. And so to best prepare our staff and our resources, we made a decision a few years ago to put a little bit of a pause on developing new neighborhood plans so that we could focus on the comprehensive plan. And so the Hill District Master Plan was the last neighborhood plan that needed to be completed and adopted. And so we are gearing up for that process now. And so in order to do that, I got some really great guidance from Cory and Deputy Director Dash on how to best prepare you all as a body to start to familiarize yourselves with the comprehensive, the comprehensive plan, with the Greater Hill District Master Plan and to keep you all updated. And so this is the first of a number of times that you all will see me before I come back for adoption. So I do have a little bit of a briefing prepared, but I can just kind of speak to it until it shows up on the screen. So the Greater Hill District had their own sort of neighborhood plan that they produced back in 2011. And so they wanted to go through a process to update their neighborhood plan and get it officially adopted by the City of Pittsburgh. And so in order to do that, they obviously had to follow the neighborhood plan guide. And so we actually started this process as a department back in 2020. And so, as you can imagine, all of the things that occurred to bring us here today, including a little thing called a pandemic that we kind of worked, continued to work through. And so there have been a number of staffing changes over the past five years, as well as some changes with the consultant team. And so we are at a stage now to where we are doing sort of the last or final sort of leg of engagement around a draft that is out for the community to comment on right now. And so the steering committee received a draft at the end of 2024, and so they provided comments and revisions to that. And in January, we started to have meetings with some of the stakeholders in the community about what sort of the sixty day comment period can look like, as well as what this final leg of engagement and communications can look like. And so from that conversation, some ideas bubbled up in terms of having sixty days comment period instead of just the normal sort of forty five. And then also creating a promotional video to help reorient folks to the body of work that we are involved in, and also to promote the sixty days, as well as doing fun things like having sort of a public unveiling of the draft plan that will be coming back to you all in a couple, a couple more months. And so with that, we've begun to work with the local CDC as well as the local RCOs to put together a calendar of events over these next sixty days. And they include things like community meetings, study sessions, any sort of events and different things like that going on in the community where we can talk about the draft, Greater Hill District Master Plan, and start to get feedback. And so we are starting to collect feedback in person and also on Engage P G H. And so the draft document is now live on Engage P G H, and so we are starting to accept comments and feedback in those two spaces. And so again, I just wanted to start to come before you all, to reorient you all to the process as we're starting to close it out and to also provide information updates in the director's reports, as well as start to prepare you all with some additional briefings, again, ahead of any sort of attempt of us coming for adoption.
Okay. Does that conclude for this session?
It does. And if you all have any questions, you can let me know.
Thank you so much, Ms. Watley, for briefing us here today and walking through that very thorough sort of plan and strategy to to move communication forward with the commission. Commissioners, are there any questions or comments? All right. I'm not hearing any. So, oh, wait, Commissioner, Vice Chair O'Neill?
No, no comments.
Okay. All right. Okay, well, then we appreciate you and look forward to continued communication. Have a great rest of your. All right. So it looks like commissioners, this is the time that we will wrap it up. We need a motion to adjourn.
No move, Mr. Chair.
All right, Commissioner Maza.
Okay.
Commissioner Maza, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you for a good day, everybody.
You too.
Thank you. Bye bye. Oh, court reporter, while you're there, I don't think that we're on. I can't remember. You look a little bit familiar, not just from this, but from something else. And I won't ask you while we're on recording, but you I can't remember where where I might know.
I did city council for three months while Bridgette was out.